Okay, we're ready to start?
Mr. President. United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all.
Just one more ten minutes please.
Kathy Conroy?
Here.
John Normal?
Here.
Jack McCann?
Here.
Mark Palazzi?
Here.
Katie Pratt?
Here.
All members present?
Okay, first order of business is to adapt the meeting minutes from the September 9th. Sorry, September 1st meeting, do we have the motion to accept? Jack takes the motion, second by Mark, Guam favors, I post carry. Okay, first case. PLZDA 2021 0045, 494 River Street, area variance for rear setback deficiency. The applicant versus Columbia LLC proposes to utilize the site of recently demolished church for a new five-story, 31,000 square foot self-storage facility as part of the adjacent existing self-storage facility at 500 River Street. This new storage facility will be constructed atop the existing foundation of the recently demolished church. The area variance is for a 15.5-foot setback, which is still at where 20 feet is required. Yeah, president, would you like to introduce yourself, please, and tell us what? And Marvin?
Let me switch it on the back. Good evening. Good evening, commissioners, um, day study, first Monday, this day, professional introduction was developed in 500 River Street, which is under construction right now, adjacent property, eventually 494 River Street, which is a site question about experiences. We were passing through the variance here, setback from the rear side. We did demolition, uncovered it, it was in very good condition, we also wanted to leave it where it was to protect the alleyway, behind everything from the area, it's actually a two well, uh, suicide.
Okay, so you get this variance, you're asking the variance because it will fit, your storage facility will be placed basically right on top of the storage there.
For the rear, uh, yes.
Right, and if you didn't get the variance, then you'd have to.
I'd have to, I'd have to adjust where the retaining vault sits, that's more work.
Right.
If money isn't, the water is, this was a simple solution. There is still some space behind, I think the concern there is retaining setbacks, not have people walking into the red light, there's still this, we're behind, and go to the right way, ask the variance again, we did need the space. Our, well, this building, it's a part of complex of our storage facility that we're rebuilding there, so it's a place for the part to pull off, um, have the patient or storage place, take their items, ornaments in the rear entrance, which would be right at this, uh, 15-foot setback area.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Jack?
Uh. I'm working for the, I'm figuring, is it, is it?
Yes.
I didn't hear about it. We haven't, we haven't done 100% of that, or, since, that side of the building. I would include that, but, so we're looking for variance, or, is?
Mark?
The existing storage facility, what part is that setback?
There is a zero setback, the existing building is constructed, that's the former of, of storage, it's covered, it's, we can use that.
Do we have any other questions? Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? I understand that if there were somebody who did want to speak, they might be up there.
Uh, yes, if.
Or here.
If, if they wanted to speak up, they would, they would mention.
Right.
By now, it's in.
They would be up there, right.
Correct.
All right, um, just answer the side, you, you know, the chat, you back, are you experiencing this property?
Yeah, I was questioning that.
Okay, now, let me just ask the previous, three questions to that, you're already working on it, right, both together?
Not on this parcel, all we did on the other parcel right now is demolishing, that was our deed, and we got it in the city, the city transferred it to our ownership.
Okay, so you're demolishing it.
It's the vacant lot right now, they left the foundation for the back section. The tree property there, because it's a retainable, against the app, so for safety, it's, it's in place. It's just a stage in place right now.
Oh, that's right. So may I ask you?
It's in addition to 500 River Street building, which is a self-storage.
Right.
Just saying, not to put the same issue that's next to it.
Right, okay, so what was your question?
For the, for the, for the experience with chatting, um, before the meeting started, do we need that, um, how the adjacent property is already stored, has been some time?
Andy, have you?
We, we, the existing neighboring property, is self-storage, they're seeking to expand that use onto the deck of lot, both lots are in the same zoning district, I think it's a question of code interpretation as to whether or not self-storage isn't allowed or used in that district, and also whether or not, if it's not allowed, which my initial reading of the code seems that it may be allowed, um, within expansion of the existing non-performance, um, either way, I don't think there's a specific answer tonight, but if I had to give a finger right now, that I, I don't believe after we conduct analysis of the experience will be required, but we, we just started having that conversation, so I'm going forward.
And we're only here to the area variance anyway, so.
Yeah, it's unrelated to your question.
Right, okay. All right, so we have nobody to speak in favor or opposition, question is answered. Do you have anything further from the board? All right, so then, we have a motion, we need a secur, we do, oh, no, see, okay.
Uh, chair, I have a motion. Uh, variance, PLZDA 2021 0045, 494 River Street, this variance, and having this, are achieving, um, but, I don't believe they can achieve the same benefit, um, and other more people, nothing, it doesn't, there's a substantial variance, especially in light of the fact that it's a storage facility, that's next to it, has a non-existing setback, and I just don't believe it's a self, I don't think.
Okay, you have second. Jack McCann, second, on the motion, Katie Pratt?
Yes.
Kathy Conroy, I vote yes. Uh, John Normal?
Yes.
Jack McCann?
Yes.
And Mark Palazzi?
Yes.
Okay, roll set. Now, you're not going far, I don't think, are you? Okay. Next case. PLZDA 2021 0046, 545, 549, and 558 River Street. Um, an area variance for parking deficiency. The applicant versus Columbia LLC proposes to construct a rock climbing gym, paint jockey in the neighborhood, a rock climbing gym on the south end of Planting Square Building, perhaps because it's involved with a 123-unit senior housing facility, bigger talking than everybody, at 549 River Street, and a loading dock and entrance to the existing building at 558 River Street. An area variance for the parking deficiency is sought where 418 spaces are posed and 479 are required. Once again, here speaking on behalf of.
Upper Columbia.
Go ahead.
So, this is the next phase of our master plan, waterfront area, showing, sorry, back to 6, find this building, plant a building, a couple of service slots, and, uh, John, I give this statement for us. This is moving north of the, this bridge. To expand the development, so far, south, bridge, up to that, it means some investment. So, involves new build next to Planting Building on the south side, between that and bridge, so they, uh, just shorter than the Planting Building itself, uh, the, the new area to bring in to this market, specifically want to come to Troy, because it's seen best fit with that, from potential user standpoint, just where it is, the area, east access off the highways, but also have that waterfront presence, uh, being attracted to their customers. Planting Building itself is also part of the project, uh, they have, uh, we have two where we just did, uh, this building, they have the buildings, uh, systems, the elevators, we have, but, the tenant, they were trying to prevent, uh, and there are, just my, it's part of that, so, side areas, uh, which are, uh, replacement, uh, yeah, or, to the north of that, across Van Cullen Street, is the senior housing project that we're looking at, 123, uh, here towards seniors, uh, to get the build, that parcel is more, and directly across the intersection of that, is the former, soon to be a warehouse building, which is starting, which has some efficiency, to help the, the entryway, and also loading so it's. So it's a mixed-use combo of these properties, what we're, we're trying to do is keep parking between all of the different parcels, the efficient, not just have aisles parking around all of this, uh, redundancies, uh, having someone plant up in our, our city, uh, not the best use of what we could do, which is why we put a secret piece on the water, just for plenty of building, and the same with the rock, right now, that parcel is just parked on the south side of the building's side, also improve the, the entryway, on the north of the bridge, have this presence there, uh, kind of balances from, on the other side of the bridge years ago, uh, it just kind of helps continue moving, helping the best, it's, it's, did some, some calculations on the parking itself, it's horrible, twice to have the space shared to the nurses, except for higher, to air.
So our request is really the senior housing component, uh, the city's code is two spaces per unit, what we're finding, from what we've done in the past, and, you know, kind of industry standards, or one, one space per unit, so, you know, we're asking for a reduction in that, uh, particular use, that would more accurately reflect what we're gonna actually see out there.
And we're supposed to do something like the gym, with the, uh, collect, well, they park it, the parking, parking, they do that, I think we did.
Right, exactly, so both the gym and the housing component are, you know, evening hour, more dependent where the office will be taken, so we're, you know, one of the big things we want to try to do, and I think the code needs to reflect this eventually, is share parking, we want to utilize those spaces longer periods of the day, it's not just one space for one use, that gets more out of use of those spaces, same thing with on the street parking, maximizing the use of those.
Now, this parking, um, those, what about across the street? The, is this parking that you needed, or on the west side of the street, or?
We control 550 spaces from River Street all the way up to the 6th Avenue.
Right.
DOT, so we have 550 spaces, and, um, we don't need that many for what we're proposing as part of parking, but we're trying to, I guess we're asking to get the parking requirement of senior housing more than actual, so that we're not crunch for parking, but it also gives us some ability to have something more in the area later on.
So you're just really looking right down tonight with the, the west side of your project?
Correct.
Right, okay, even though they mentioned the.
It's a grocery store, basically, it's just, it actually, it's on a, on a parcel, that's just.
It's just part of our block project.
Yes.
Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
Um, when you, so it's, we're, we're calling it a grocery store, but it's a lot of, so, like a.
Now, the kind of, the kind of, sort of building, bottom, ten of, or, or made this the store itself, most of the rest of the second floor storage, storage, is right there, right.
Do you have a tenant about this?
Yes.
Okay, so I love that, that supermarket in that area, so that, you know, uh, yeah, the, 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 so, we're looking, we're talking about like 61 spaces, right?
We're actually, I'm actually looking to get one space, I mean, there is, there to kind of talk about just 61, reality is, senior housing is at 123 units, complete 123 spaces, and 236.
Okay.
So also the way of the agenda is incorrect, because the way the agenda has, you're seeing 61 spaces are really, you're asking from. Right, we're just asking that the senior housing component be reflective of actual parking, you know, demand and industry standard. The, the parking providing narrative says that, uh, staff, staff comments say that it did not include the 93 parking spaces that you guys need. We have, right, we have 530 spaces in the area, so we.
Okay, do we have any more questions? Right now, can anybody speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, if you want to step forward.
Hi, John, I told the property, I'm working, agreed to have, the property that directly back to the, those groceries. So, you know, this project, first of all, I don't understand why we have three projects. These are three different sites, and it's three different construction, we're saying, sorry, you mentioned in earlier meetings, or planning, it doesn't really make sense why these three items are tied together, um, in terms of parking on the pair tonight, with, uh, with parking places, they've got, under this drawing, I assume this is off the board, so, they're all the, you know, in, in the, the staff notes, they've talked about how, you know, recently the bridge was repaired, it was closed for three months, it was for like a year, it was closed, and there's still such, you're, you're closed because of the, we're gonna have other projects coming along. Uh, there's gonna be other projects coming along, like the lower, who's in Street, walkability project, that's most likely gonna take up, um, 93 parking spaces, right around the exit lane, how long is that? And I'm, I'm saying this because here on the, with the, when the parking is out, they take up our entire lot, our parking, our street, even where it says no parking, they take our whole, and it's, and it's hard for me to even be able to put my vehicle into a regular spot over there, because it's always so, that's, and then that's my kind of street, so, same fact, we have, you can, you have a spot, that's parent, they, in that project, they also talk about senior housing, and how this lots of that, coming here, that's not even part of our program, we have to make it should be part of our, my concern on that, my own, is up my, so that, if you guys are familiar with the summit project, like there, they had proposed initially as senior housing, and they got variance for very large variance, and that, they sold land to another property owner, built market rate housing, so now we have a place that is stacked with parking, because it was built under a variance for senior housing, when it came to planning, they said they couldn't do a thing about it, because it was passed, and it was marked as a variance for residential park, that's not what we have, you know, have this, there was no way to hold the landowner, because they can't use that variance, because it was a variance for residential housing, that's what he was putting up, so it's the same thing here, not this specific, both, we're asking us, they give them half the parking department instantly, because it's gonna be senior housing, but what are you gonna approve? And approve senior. So if you approve it, you're approving it as residence. So you can take it along.
Thank you very much, Andy, somebody else want to speak over here?
Hi, my name is Amy Klein, I'm from, uh, Grocenter, it's a block away, we're undergoing expansion, so, so, um, our, it's a grocery, um, uh, efficient, um, well, um, yeah, it's very, very proud, but, um, yes, you have a great question, we just, uh, immediate system would block the rest, uh, just, uh, to sleep about that, it's right up here, the parking, uh, we came before zoning planning, house for the senior, variance on, I think, it's important to have adequate parking, block up and down, block through the street, you see how tight parking is, it's tight down, and it's gonna be, uh, uh, talking about senior housing, it's always talking about, uh, the most important ingredient grocery is parking, you know, with additional activities, whether it's a rock climbing gym, or to, whatever, you need full and adequate parking, and that doesn't exist with parking, there are many ways to mitigate lax on parking, if that's a concern, you can do forest pavement, you can do green parking lots, these are things that we integrated into our project at our home expense, uh, to ensure that the, uh, environment is preserved, and that the, um, my system is taken into account, which is something that the city should always be concerned about, we all agree, and these are things that should be required, when we have, when looking at this parking, the asphalt is nothing possible to sustain, we urge this board not to make a variance on any of this parking, the parking, this parking required should be required, this is a very bad, that's development, that's a suggestion, and this neighborhood is ready very good, there is a parking lot that is operated by the, one of that, one is mostly not used, not used that, uh, white fish shuttle that's provided, and, so, I think, uh, that is, is not an option, and should not be considered an option with that.
Okay, thank you very much, it's fine. Anybody else want to speak in opposition? Thank you, everybody?
We're asking, uh, I think the, the city recognizes the code is a little excessive, I think in their future revisions, you're gonna see that this, uh, this section would be two, two spaces per unit, it would be more reflective of actual, um, use and industry standards, so I, I don't think a reduction for the senior housing pieces to one space per unit is anything that would upset the whole area for parking, uh, we control 550 spaces, we have more parking than anybody else in the area, so we are able to move people around. I think, you know, we've been here for 10, 15 years, uh, first time we did, I worked on the, Music Street Bridge was last year, which was convenient, because a lot of people weren't working, so that worked out well, but, other than that, we've never had an issue with DOT and shutting down the lots, so I don't expect that to be a problem, again, I don't think the actual use of our development, generating parking, will exceed the space that we have, I'm guessing that the code is, owners will be 336 spaces for the whole development that we need, and we have 550 spaces, that's just, we're trying to say, you know, let's get code getting right, right in mind, so that we can do other things, and still not be a parking problem here.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody from the board have any other questions or observations you'd like to make? John?
Yeah, Kathy, and you, or, or someone else could run through, there was a discussion of the, the number, the spots that we should be talking about, it's, talk about the difference, 479 required, and 418 imposed.
Yeah, now that's what it says on our, our, that's what we're looking at, uh, the fact that, uh, in your mind, we might well agree that, uh, 123 unit senior housing facility would only need 123, as opposed to 246, you can keep that in your mind, but, our, our area variance is for 61 spaces.
Thank you back on, we asked for a variance from 479 down to 418, or 161.
No, we can't ask for that down to 123, 61, I don't think we can do that, because the code calls for 246.
I'm not really sure what, um, code is asking for in this instance, but I, the numbers listed on the staff report were based on a parking study provided by the applicant, uh, in total number.
I think we gotta go with that, and then when the new zoning ordinance comes out, the board, this would say, senior housing or whatever, 240, they don't need two spaces per unit, they only need one per unit.
The new zoning code will actually.
But, but, my point is, the 123, the, to, uh, 246 to 123, is something that's gonna come out, the origin, it's not something we're ready to vary it on.
Well, okay, well, that, that, yes, the, the new zoning code would affect this project at this stage, and the new zoning code isn't, isn't actually going to stipulate, at least the proposal right now is not stipulating parking requirements, it would be stipulate conditions where, uh, if that, a developer needs to prepare a parking demand study, and would actually look at parking at, and, and, the project's specific basis, coming up with numbers that are thrown out there.
Okay.
Correct, right, so, you know, inevitably.
We're looking at, we're looking at 2479 to 2488.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the, if the, the mix of the apartments is one, one to two-bedroom units, then typically one to two-bedroom units demand less than two parking spaces need, I don't know if it's a, it's a little less one, it could be with senior housing, uh, but certainly, you know, we're seeing somewhere between 1.3 and 1.5, uh, for most of the, and that's not taking into account shared parking, some other things that this development have, that a standalone apartment complex would not have.
You think?
It, it might be formal substance, because the variance request, 418, 479, is 61, it's the methods, so I pray, they're asking for, um, an overall plan that allows for one parking space, um, per unit, rather than two parking spaces, which is required by the code for the senior component, but the overall, because they presented it as an overall cycle application, variant application, the request is for a reduction of 61.
That's what they're calling 61.
That's what, right. And I, I rose with, there was some confusion about the DOT lots, um, they, they lease parking spaces from DOT, I believe the number was 93 spaces, those are not included in 479, um, because they're leased, so they were, they're not. Correct, but they're not part of this variance request, they, they control. They, they control additional 33.
Okay, so is there a question, Jack?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else or are we ready to vote? Yeah.
Count chair, I move that for page 2021. That more rights for possible people on this action is available, but how much they can terminate that project is not expected to possibly environmental impact.
Get a second on the motion. If I didn't go in favor, you say aye.
Aye.
Approve, carry. Do we have a motion on the application? I move that in the case PLZBA 2021-0046, Garment Block. This is a positive motion to grant the area variance for parking efficiency of 61 spaces in this project. I feel that all things considered, the requested variance out of 479 to down to 418 does not exactly a substantial decrease or request, I should say. I don't believe in this article change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, but my understanding being that a lot of this parking is taking place behind buildings. I know I did not, I'm going to lose, so I don't see where I, where it would necessarily affect community garden or capital moves, I'm sorry, or the downtown spot we're talking about, the west side of River Street. And I don't believe that that would have such a negative effect on the east side of River Street. This is a positive motion to grant. Go ahead, second. Dr. Can second on motion. John Warmyel.
Vote yes to approve.
Mark Palazzi. Katie McLaren.
Yep.
Jack the Can.
Yes.
Then Kathy Heinrich, yes, to approve. Next case. Any else? CBA 2021-0038, 848 Fourth Avenue for a used variance. The applicant Captain Vandenberg is proposing to use this property as professional office and wood shop.
My son Joseph is the owner of the whole property. Currently resides five minutes since Avenue Men will be moving up. First quarter, then the 46th. Yes, girl, team that. They get part of the end of that system for her. And the property next row is from here for the Washington City Troy. Sat, sat in Virginia for 14 years at Williams instead of fire device. It's a two, two story. It's a garage, everything else. Going to the story, the, the lot condition is off the back of the building, taking the garage down. We're in process of putting defenses up that want to use single story commercial buildings, better commercial buildings. Be part of the nearest goal, not as a. Sat home restoration, monitor that. Some of the first. We hope to use the property as a, as an office for two of us, as I urged my son to. And use the building as a shot for us to start to utilize and rework some of the stuff in somebody's house.
Okay, we have any questions to the applicant?
Kevin. Your son's listed on the right.
Yes.
Andy, I brought this up to you. See your question. Can't be able to map the page. My applicant would not be part of the.
Yes, no, you're absolutely correct. In order to bring an appeal, you have to be a party, which would be the property owner or neighbor or a city employee or official. In this instance, it wasn't clear to me from the application because it's just a signature, it's a scroll. I'm not sure if the actual property owner signed the application or Mr. Vandenberg did. Mr. Vandenberg signed the application, he can represent the applicant, but he can't be the applicant if this is not the property owner. So he would need the applicant consent. We'd still need the owner's consent for you to present the application. So, and it's just, again, technical detail.
And it's something I would have, I, I looked at every, for every applicant across.
Yeah, so there's two ways to do it. The property owner either signs the application and authorizes somebody to submit some type of other documentation, give a consent. If you don't have that, then technically, Mr. Vandenberg isn't a free party because he's not a neighbor or the property.
Can I ask you a question now over how to set a view when people move in and say, you know, my son's got a chance, I am here representing him.
It depends on who signs the application. If, if the application is signed by the sign and then someone comes in and says, I'm representing so and so because they're out of town, then it's okay. The situation here around the building is Mr. Vandenberg signed the application on behalf of his son. I have no reason to believe he didn't have the authorization, but technically because he signed as the applicant, he's the applicant, but he's not a free party. And you need to be the free party. So what we need is either a revised application or a consent for him to represent the applicant. Correct.
Vandenberg, you can't, we can't hear it to sign? Well, I mean, that's, the whole thing seems to be kind of nitpicking to me only because, I mean, we go over this, we've heard these things before. I mean, actually, my face is a few people try to do a gotcha thing. And I know you're not trying to do it, but I mean, I'm just saying, you know, I mean.
You have to, the lawyer's going, you have to be a free party or authorized by the. A way to resolve it without requiring an additional visit may be to condition an approval or condition a decision upon submission from the property owner of consent for Mr. Vandenberg to make the application. That, that may be a way to resolve it without, you know, having.
Okay, Kevin.
I'm in no time. Make sure. I have a problem.
All right. All right, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, let's just not. I just get really annoyed with people with things like this, that's all. That's all, it just really annoys me when we got all the gotcha stuff.
And I still go forward with the planning board.
Andy?
Who signed the application?
I signed every application.
Okay, and when are you going to put it in?
Twenty.
Bring something in with you.
Sign the.
Yeah, or just a letter, say, I authorize him signing the application, I authorize him presenting the application. We'll, we'll send you. Send you a letter, then you just relax.
Next case, BLCBA 2021-0042, 401 Third Street, minor accessory structure and area variance, residential setback deficiency. The applicant Sydney Fleischer is proposing to construct a carport behind this property along Pike Street Alley. An area variance is stored for a three foot rear step back where three feet seven and a half inches is required or a two foot size step back where three feet seven and a half inches is required due to the middle accessory structure. Yes. Hope you can, hope you sign your own application.
That's it.
Sure you did, go ahead.
Well, I want to build a carport in this building.
I'll just introduce self.
Okay, my name is Sydney Fleischer. I live at. Creating sports. Building a four one. The group is going to park this park.
Okay, why do you need setback? Various, which problem that you, that you can't fit it within the setback requirements required by the code? You just have to explain it on, on stage and explain it, you know what I mean?
Well, I wanted to. Space with, Billy wants to be nice.
Okay.
Nice, big boys.
Okay.
It's over, it's spent over.
But, okay, and you can't fit it within the, there, within the setback requirements by the code? Okay, so you need variance to do it. All right, and are you the only person in there that's, that's?
No, if you're one of the.
Right. Just trying to get it. Just trying to get it all on tape.
They're running the carport all over.
Yeah, okay.
This is the South. It opens. Major area.
Yeah, you're right, that's true. Okay, do we have any questions with the applicant from the board? Anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? All right, we have no questions. This is enough, I think.
No secret.
No secret, so do we have a motion to approve this fair or deny this variance? We have motions, please. Okay, Jack, the kid, a next motion to approve. Do we have second by Mark Palazzi? Motion, General Warmyel.
Vote yes to approve.
Katie McLaren?
Yes.
Mark Palazzi?
Yes.
Kathy Heinrich, yes, Jack the Can?
Yes.
Okay, that was simple enough. So, you're welcome. Next case. BLZBA 2021-0047, 576 Fifth Avenue, area variance for a multi-family residential parking deficiency. The applicant Larry Tum of AW Laquia Holding LLC is proposing to convert a three-story existing Masonry School building into a 24-unit market rate multi-family building. No dedicated parking area is proposed for this project. The applicant is represented by Lisa Rodriguez of TAC. All right. If you just pull that microphone down and shut up. What you're trying to do.
I'm going to announce a building similar to the units.
Okay.
Spaces. I follow the units. The units in the gym are mine yet. Others have the units in the gym, everybody has their nose except for one that's now.
Okay.
Okay, so you probably recognize this, we did it here before, we cater for the 21 units previous time. Some of that you want to actual work in depth, preliminary design and various work for the numbers for what he feels will make it work. He is asking for more units. It was, turned out it was easy to accommodate his request to get three more units and I feel that those work better. That's the main difference. What we did was on the outside of the building where we had units, we made that three units on the second and third floor and then we added a unit on the stage. Interesting, interesting unit. We're still trying to make it so you can stand at the edge of the stage. Just talk. And the other changes to the site, I'd like to store the garbage outdoors rather than deal with the spell and mess. Keeping it indoors, a shelling dumpster at the moment, I think it has to be evaluated by the trash removal company as to whether it be a dumpster or can, so there is a proper wire in that area. There will be some sort of containers in and enclosure. And that takes away the, we have a recent parking spot dedicated in the back there. So I figured it's better to have one designated space, parking space in the back, that I will leave that as a loading zone. So anybody could pull up there. Yeah, they can pull up, drop stuff off and then go park their cars. So out of the three spaces, there's one space left, we're not suggesting it not be dedicated for parking, but for loading. And we had Jason do a study that supported our request last time to provide, we were providing three parking spaces for 21 units. Now we're proposing to provide no parking spaces for 24 units. Feel that there is ample on street parking in the Jason studies were about. And for approved that in previous iteration, so we're hoping that this minor change will still be okay in your eyes. Larry's here too today and. Look, any.
Yeah, Lisa, hello. It's nice to see you first. No, Lisa, please, well, here for any questions.
We'll get to, get to you in a second, okay? I'm sorry, what'd you say? I can't hear a word you're saying. Oh, okay. All right, we'll get to you in a second. Does anybody from the board have any questions to the applicant? Does anybody here want to speak in favor of this proposal? Or in opposition, you're not sure, you just have a question or two? All right, come on out.
So it's the building.
On Fifth Avenue? It's hard to hear you, but could maybe you bring the microphone close to you. Thank you.
I just, my property in October of 2019 and I'm living on the first floor. And I, I think it's a good idea that many of this back because I think. Reach the five would seem to be area and I'm using. And I noticed that in summer months, right now there's plenty of parking. Up here it's sort of a parking. There seems to be plenty of parking now. It's a call. Completely. Property, the property. Last year and I noticed that in the summer months. Especially along the avenue. People go to the store and ice cream place and. But then the avenue gets a little. There does seem to be untied. Like next to House 598, a vacant area. And I'm hoping that maybe these temporary land spots. I imagine that a lot of tenants might be using public minutes. But it's always the nice to be guarded from where you live in New York City to have a spot. Rather than have to go near. Parking. Okay, so. And another concern of mine, you mentioned the trash. Is there any way that more on trash?
Well, we got, I don't want to cut you off, but we, we're all here to do the party.
Okay, I actually thinking that with an additional building, it might have trash.
Yeah, I understand that, but this is.
Okay, well, that's it, that makes sense.
Do you live directly across the street?
Okay.
All right, thank you, you're welcome. Anybody else want to speak? Favor or? Okay, go ahead, you have something you want to add to the.
So regarding the parking, I mean, I think the study itself out. I, I now own 598. So, regarding the parking, I mean, I think the study, it's something out, I, I now, five ninety did that well, and that's a sentence in there, and there is a, we're, uh, having that, that sentence on the first floor. Looking at ways to get parking in the back of that building. That's where you need to build, right?
That's not directly.
Well, that's right here, it's. Yes.
I said on the other side.
Oh, so you're looking at getting parking back there. Go up one more.
Is it on the other side of?
Oh, five, this is five ninety. That's five ninety, the, the front, that retail space, they used to be a lounge.
You want the retail space?
Yeah, the, the building, the retail space, and the carriage house in the back.
Right, okay, you want all that?
Yes.
Okay, so you're just in the White House next to it? Okay. All right, yeah, you want the other one, yeah, okay.
So these, these two? Yes, there's a, so, off the alley, there's, there's, you know, it's between the party for that building, uh, four or five spots.
So that will help with five ninety, we'll get down off the street. And if the landlord starts to have trouble renting, parking, you got the parking, you don't, they hear it out. Top, there's the whole potential opportunity, firehouse, that could come up. Down, and we go, and it's like. That's obviously a close site, although, uh, not the part of the.
Right, right, what?
Right, there, there are no other sites, right, in the area, we're working on that. Obviously, people, the town, they have a couple of units, right?
One of the thoughts that I had when we first looked at this project, back in, uh, one or two units, was we looked at doing angled parking along here, because these are extra-wide sidewalks, the former use of the school. So there was a thought here, I was there, they were going to create four additions. Well, right, so, so right now, you know, if you look at this, you maybe have five or six parallel parking spaces, but by doing angled parking here, we could increase that a little bit. That actual, that actually made it onto the original site land, which prompted the parkland study, which concluded that there was no additional parking. So that was approved.
But, but, but it's not.
But now, well, now, all they added is three units, that would change the conclusion. I mean, we could certainly update the parking study, but the conclusion would be the same.
But it is conceivable that they could do the angled parking.
Oh, absolutely, there's opportunities to do additional parking.
Right, right.
Yes.
Okay, do we have any further for the applicant?
I have to do plan, you're promoting either two spots in that sign, that place, that's the concern.
Okay, so, you have to know how to anything for the cat? See what it is? Yes, Madam Chair, I move that P L Z B A twenty twenty one dash zero zero four seven, more finance, propose to be an unlisted action, with sufficient information available, of course, to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause environmental. We have second. Jack, okay, motion, vote favor. Oath, carry, and now we have a motion on the application. For C B A twenty twenty one dash zero zero four seven, I move to the area variance. I do not believe another desirable change will be effective in the neighborhood, or in that residential property, because, uh, I don't believe it will have an adverse effect on the neighborhood. The, the, of the, we discussed, we need to stop studying, in fact, this was. Five and four. We have second. John, second, on the motion, Jack McCann? Mark Palazzi?
Yes.
Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to approve, John Romile?
Vote yes.
Katie Clark?
Yes.
Okay, so, we love the, thank you. Okay, next case, P L Z B A twenty twenty one dash zero zero fifty, three oh nine Eighth Street, an area variance for parking deficiency. The applicant Unity House Troy recently received approval for a change of use from administrative use to a six-bed situational crisis center residence that will provide residential services to adults experiencing acute symptoms of their mental illness. This area variance, so like, is for parking deficiency, in which four parking spaces are proposed, or seven are required.
Good evening, Chair, my name is Sarah Dury, of Chase Companies. Sorry, thank you. I'm representing Unity House for this project. They have, as mentioned, they have received an existing use variance to change our administrative building that's taken to a six-bed crisis unit. As such, we, for the program, require to have seven parking stalls. On site currently, there is an existing parking lot that typically can hold more, um, in the requirement, but it is done by double stacking vehicles, and the lot width does not allow for seven parking stalls to fit, with the nine-by-eighteen stalls required by the city. In addition, the existing parking does not have a handicap seating space. So as part of our proposal, we are proposing to remove and reconstruct the existing parking lot to be an eighteen-foot width for parking stalls, fit the four parking stalls that we can fit, uh, with one handicap space, with a eight-foot wide proving space. Uh, and then across the street, Unity House also owns and controls three oh eight and three oh six. In Street, which has a parking lot that is also underutilized, so Unity House, uh, plans to, they mentioned that that parking lot is never at capacity. Um, in the event that they do need those three additional spaces, they are willing to allow those using the six, uh, every crisis center to park in that lot as well.
Okay, do we have any questions for the applicant? It's my, they don't, you're right, right. I can call that, they'll appear, just speak in favor or in opposition? So, right, if that's the case, um, did, did anybody have any questions? Okay, so we got a secret.
Madam Chair, I move that in P L Z B A twenty twenty one dash zero zero fifty, uh, that more type of, to this report, looks to be an unlisted action, with sufficient information available, of course, to make a determination that the project is not expected to pose significant environmental.
We have second. Second by Mark Palazzi, vote favor. I oppose, carry, now we have a, um, motion on the application.
Chair, for P L Z B A twenty twenty one dash zero zero fifty, I would make a common motion to remove the area variance for parking deficiency. I don't believe it is substantial efficiency, especially because we know, uh, our assumption is that Unity House has a lot across the street that would rely to do it. And I do not believe in any, you know, desirable change.
Hey, you have second? John Romile, second, on the motion, Jack McCann? Mark Palazzi? Kathy Conroy, yes? Ja, uh, yeah, Jack, uh, did I, yeah, John Romile? Okay, Katie Clark?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations, you're all set. The motion adjourned?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Most members of this board recently that, uh, might. So I just wanted to make that known, that Karen's app like, wait.
Wait, facing in, uh, close argument, in, uh, memory, okay? Okay. Okay. Maybe, but you're, memory of Carrie.